I'd like to call this meeting of the Select Board on August 3rd. Thank you. To order by roll call?
Killcoin, present.
Smith, present.
Krantz and present. Now, everybody that can pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Sounds so much better when there's more people in the room. You all should come more often. Very exciting stuff.
Enjoy the committee while you're here.
Yeah. Here's a sign up. Okay, and my counterparts had a chance to look over the minutes.
Make a motion that we approve the Select Board minutes of the executive session of November 1st, 2021.
I know that. I would second that. However, we will not release them at this point.
Can't.
Right? Okay. So, all those in favor?
Killcoin, aye.
Krantz, aye. Smith abstains.
Yeah, make a motion. We approve the executive minutes of the Select Board of October 25th, 2021.
Second. Again, not to be released?
That's correct.
As of yet. All those in favor?
Killcoin, aye.
Krantz, aye. See how exciting that all was? Aren't you glad you came?
And I'd like to make a motion that we approve the regular minutes of the Select Board meeting of July 20th, 2022, as written.
I will second that.
Any discussion? Any changes that were made? You already sent it forward to Karma? Karma, rather. All those in favor?
Killcoin, aye.
Smith, aye.
Krantz, aye. Okay. We're actually a few minutes early for the hearing.
Yep.
Great. No. I'm gonna open it anyway. 6:35?
6:35.
Yeah. It's a little bit early, but we're not doing anything with it anyway. Right. Continuing. Okay. We have a public hearing on an earth removal permit for 69 Leominster Road, parcel 8550. And so I entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Killcoin, aye.
Smith, aye.
Krantz, aye. Now, the applicant has asked us if we would continue the public hearing in that he doesn't have all his ducks in a row yet. So I would make a motion that we have a continuance to our August 31st meeting at 6:35.
Okay. Second.
Any discussion on that? John?
No, it's pretty complete, but apparently there's a couple of things he must think he has.
They just got the engineering stuff back yesterday, so they just don't have a chance, didn't have a chance before today to get their responses ready.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, all those in favor?
Killcoin, aye.
Smith, aye.
Krantz, aye. On that particular subject, we do not have another meeting after tonight until August 31st. But I would propose that if the applicant needs to have this done before then, then we would have a special meeting with Mr. Smith and myself because Mr. Killcoin will be on vacation.
We'll be on telephone reach. No, I don't know. I can call him if necessary.
Come down. It's an hour and a half.
Now, why don't we tell her anything?
Sorry, you don't mind doing something like that? Okay, then I would call to adjourn the public hearing.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Killcoin, aye.
Smith, aye.
Krantz, aye. Okay. So, our next order of business is another police appointment. People are gonna start talking because the cruisers are here way too often. But...
I need a punch card every time I measure.
You still don't get a free pass.
So, I am here to respectfully request the appointment of Officer Picaro, Michael Picaro, to a patrolman with the department. During the last timing process, Mike interviewed, and the sergeants and I were unanimous in that we'd like to bring him on if we had a position available. Unfortunately, Detective Johnson retired last Friday, so we do have an opening. And with the amount of available police positions in the area, we didn't want to wait. Luckily, DJ's gone on to, he sent us a picture today that he was at the beach with the wife and family. At least he's enjoying it a little bit. But again, there's so many positions available, we didn't want to wait. And we had definitely decided if we had a position, we'd like Mike to come. He's a 17-year veteran Princeton PD, following in Officer Chase's footsteps, which is one of our amazing hires. He's got experience with firearms, issuing two of the things that I'm really interested in as a public information officer and crisis negotiator certified. Everybody's real excited about the prospect of being here. And if you guys would see fit, I'd appreciate the point.
Thank you, Chief.
Hi. I'm Mike Picaro, 42 years old. As the chief said, I've been in Princeton for 17 years. I started in Princeton in 2001 as a dispatcher. So I've been with that town for a long time. I live in Rutland with my wife Amanda. I come from a long line of police officers. My father worked for the sheriff's office. My cousin works in Holden. I have another cousin in Worcester. I have an uncle who was a probation chief. Law enforcement runs in my background. It's what I've always done. It's what I want to do. And I'm excited that the chief has seen fit to give me this opportunity to come work in Sterling.
You do know that people who come here to work from Rutland actually move here? Such a giving community?
I'm giving my wife's phone number.
I'm just kidding. Do you have any questions, John?
No, 17 years. It's a very nice resume and background. Obviously very qualified. I'm just curious, a couple, two or three things. They actually had a vaccine mandate up in Rutland? Last two years, two years ago?
I could speak to Rutland as a resident.
Oh, I was in Princeton. I'm sorry. Princeton, yeah. I didn't know that.
I couldn't, yeah. In Princeton, they proposed a vaccine mandate, yes.
For, was that just the police? Or was it for all municipal people?
Town employees.
That never went through, did it?
It did not.
Okay. Mandates are kind of tough. What is a stop-stick device? I know I'm getting into the weeds here, but I'm just curious what that is.
It's a pursuit, if you're chasing a vehicle, pursuing a vehicle, it's an intervention technique. It's just a plastic strip. It looks like a black tube. There's usually three of them linked together. And you throw it in front of a, you could throw it in front of a car that's failing to stop for you, and it'll slowly deflate the tires. That's a stop-stick.
Getting to that. No-shave November initiative. What is that? No-shave November initiative? I'm just curious.
It's, it's, it's an initiative where the officers raise money or pay money to not have to shave for a month, 30 days, 31 days. And generally, the money goes to a charity. Something like a breast cancer awareness charity, Run to Home Base, Support Your Troops charity, anything like that. We all pay into it. And generally, the chief, she has been gracious enough to allow us not to shave for a month. And she'll even extend it if we cough up more money for another 30 days. So we look pretty. Grisly at the end of the 60 days.
Red socks back.
Really happy it's not a head shave, for sure. That's even tougher.
I am, yes.
I saw one of the certificates. I'm not even gonna ask. Very great, great background on that. My only other question, you didn't happen to be patrolling the road, Route 31 at about 10 o'clock?
Jesus, John. All right. David, do you have anything?
No, I just...
You didn't want to hear the end of that story.
It's a pretty impressive resume you have here. And I know Sean has done due diligence. And if Sean has put you forward to this position, you know doubt deserving of it, so.
Thank you.
I agree. Sean and the rest of the department back you up, then how could he ever say no?
I think they do.
John does.
I'm behind him, for sure.
John does, anyway. And Mooch is here, so I think from your resume, you'd be a great asset to the department. And thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sterling.
Thank you.
All right.
Again.
So, what's the party?
We haven't scheduled that. From what I understand, he doesn't want to have one.
Doesn't matter.
It's becoming right of passage, so we will schedule one. But again, because of what Chief Chamberlain created with you guys' support, even the townspeople, the men and women that work for us, with us at the police department, have created such a good culture that we, the last three people we've stolen from other departments. And it's just a great situation to be in, that people want to come to us. So, thank you guys, too.
Sean, you might want to mention, too, that, as we all know, DJ, Dave Johnson, has retired as a detective. And now you have moved...
I have moved Brian Ferguson into the position. He is one of the four candidates for sergeant that will be concluded somewhere around, I think, the second week in October. So, he's permanently assigned, but he would also like that position. So, we'll see how everything plays out, whether or not he stays in it permanently or if he moves up to sergeant.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
What?
Wait. He doesn't have the position yet.
Oh, that's right. I make a, I entertain a motion to appoint Michael Picaro as a patrolman in our Sterling Police Department.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor? Krantz, aye. Smith, aye. We got it. Okay. Well, the Girl Scouts have been waiting patiently to talk to us. You know, you can use all of this for one of your badges for government study. But you probably want to go to different towns to really check it out. Just say it's, or a little different. So, what up?
Hi, my name's Alyssa Chombley, and I am part of the Troop 30502. And we came in here today to talk about our Silver Award. A Girl Scout Silver Award is an achievement that a group of up to four girls can receive by fixing a problem in their local area and causing a positive lasting impact from what they have done. For our Silver Award, we decided to build bat houses and place them in Sterling not only to help the bat population, but to also to decrease the mosquito population and therefore risk, and therefore decrease the risk of triple E. We would like to put up four bat houses with some possible locations being Choxit Middle School and Muddy Pond. After we install these bat houses, we plan to have someone keep checking on the bat houses to make sure they are still intact in a suitable environment for the bats. Bats help the environment by eating bugs that carry diseases such as mosquitoes. These houses will help the bats because they will give them a safe environment to live in. And the houses will keep the people on the field safe because the bats will get rid of the mosquitoes and other pests, which fight the people playing and practicing with a lower risk of getting triple E or other viruses carried by mosquitoes. We are asking permission to hang up these bat houses around town to compete, complete our Silver Award for Girl Scouts and to make our environment a better place.
I am Matea Merini, and I'm also part of Troop 30502. So, we're going to make four bat houses, which will be plenty to, for the size of the area that we are targeting. Each bat house can be a home to up to 20 to 50 bats. Bat houses are most likely to succeed when there is a source of water, in our case, Muddy Pond, within a quarter of a mile from the houses. Another way to attract bats to our homes is to hang the houses 12 plus feet in the air, which we will also do. We are keeping in mind that bats prefer their houses to be facing the east or the south. All of these ways, all of these are ways to be sure that the bats will live on our houses. Studies have shown that a single bat can eat more than 1,000 insects in one night. Some of these insects can bite humans or carry diseases that can be harmful to us. By putting up bat houses, we are giving bats a safe place to live and also reducing the insect population. Bat houses are maintenance-free, so it would not take much work after putting them up. Although, we are in contact with the Choxit Conservation Club to see if they would be interested in checking on them periodically to make sure they are intact.
Any questions, John?
Where, excuse me. Ladies, where are the four, are they gonna be over by Muddy Pond, all four of them? Or are they gonna be somewhere, one of them gonna be there and two or three others elsewhere?
We're going to spread them out, like, through, like, a few, like, two by Muddy Pond and then two by the soccer fields behind Choxit.
Yeah, okay. I would have the pond for sure.
Yeah.
For them. That's a great idea. I think we're more than, I mean, it's a great idea.
It's a great location, too, with the athletic fields around the area.
Especially in the evening right now.
Absolutely. Great idea.
Thank you.
When will this be started?
The deadline for our project is September 30th. So, all we just need right now is permission and then to hang them up.
Yeah, the bat houses are already built, so.
Did you build them?
Yeah, we built them ourselves.
And how are you gonna get them 12 feet in the air?
Ladders.
I'm just thinking that 12 feet is quite high. And, you know, how do you actually check them?
Again, ladders, basically, the same way to put it up. You climb the ladder.
We'll climb the ladder and...
Just check the wood, make sure it's not rotting or anything.
Yeah. There's really no maintenance after putting them up. Just making sure they're not, like, on the ground or someone hasn't knocked them over, so.
And they go on entries?
Yes.
And do you need a letter from us for permission?
Uh, we need letters.
I don't know if we, I think we just need permission, yeah. So, like, verbal permission or written, whatever, works better.
Question, who controls the grounds?
Yeah. Okay. And any other questions? Any questions from the GP? Anybody else want a bat house near there? Yeah? Put your name, give them your name. Okay. All right, thank you, ladies, for coming in. I appreciate it. We can take a vote on that. I would entertain a motion to give Troop 30502, right? One else?
Good job.
Thank you. It's a long distance, you know. Permission to hang your bat houses over on Muddy Pond and Choxit.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Killcoin, aye.
Krantz, aye.
Smith, aye.
All set. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
And thank you to your supporters, your cheerleaders here.
Yes.
Yeah. All right. And next on our list of things to do tonight is a resolution. I doubt we'll have a resolution, but we are gonna talk about the erosion on town beach and what direction we're going in. And Barbara's here. Anybody else coming, Barbara?
Do you want to do something else before us?
We can look at approving, sign the maintenance agreement. I'm guessing Bill, you've already gone through this?
Yeah, it looks pretty similar to one that I found from previous years. He just had to change the year. There was a typo on that.
Looks pretty much identical, what I can recall.
How's the flooring going over there?
It's on my report.
We'll wait till then, and maybe for... Any questions on the maintenance agreement? John?
No, I don't. It's, it's, like I said, it's almost, except for the date changes and possibly the numbers. Debt for inflation, it's identical. I'll move that we approve the, approve the school maintenance agreement as submitted this evening.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Killcoin, aye.
Okay, and we need to sign off on that. Yeah. So... Should we go to the DPW now, though? Okay. All right. Okay.
Yeah, I think so.
How are you?
Good, you?
I don't get a chance to go to your meetings, but it's good to see you. The other one there?
That's why I'm sitting behind him.
Okay. All right, so this is gonna be a DPW update. And go for it.
Excellent. Well, thanks for having me out. It's nice to be here. I have kind of a typed up list. I'll go through. We've been pretty busy, so I want to keep you guys updated. I know this is my first update to you folks since I started. But we have definitely had a busy summer so far. We're really catching up from a short-staffed summer of last year. We are now fully staffed. It's been fantastic. The crew's really working well together. We started off roadside mowing early, and that will continue until the snow flies with our new loader-mounted mower that was approved at the 2021 town meeting. This machine's been a huge improvement over the older and smaller machine, and I believe the results speak for themselves. We've been focusing on catching up on some of those neglected areas where in the future, those will be more maintenance, you know, versus hardcore mowing. We've also done various roadwork projects that have already been completed this construction season, and we have more to come. That includes catch basin repairs and road repairs. We did complete a substantial project over the Fairbank Street culvert. So, DPW crews excavated the existing road over the culvert, built two large concrete end walls, backfilled and repaved the road. End result came out very nice. It's a product that myself and our crew are proud of. So, we're trying to kind of step up our game in some of our in-house construction work. And I think it's been going quite well. Give you an update on some of the larger type of projects. We have a large amount of paving scheduled for both this construction season and into next construction season. Currently, we have a signed contract with Lazaro Paving to do a full-depth reclamation in paving, which brings the, right down a dirt on Kendall Hill Road from Chamberlain Road to Chase Hill Road, as well as repairing and repaving Clinton Road and Choxit Road, so where the bump is from the trucks that come out of Choxit Road. We'll also likely do a full-depth reclamation on a section of Ausgood Road, the Crowley Hill end, under this current contract. And that work is scheduled to begin after Labor Day. Since we received such good prices on that contract and we have a large amount of roadway funding this year, we put out a second contract that included Route 140 from Crowley Road to Dana Hill, a portion of Dana Hill, Bootell from Muddy Pond to Greenland, Lower Meeting House, and Pratt's Junction. So, those bids for the work goes open tomorrow morning, which is exciting. And a lot of that work with this time of year will likely spill into 2023. But that's okay. It'll be under contract and we'll be ready to roll. Once I advertised that bid, I was notified by Mass DOT that Sterling was selected as part of the state's Transportation Bond Bill Municipal Paving Program, which is essentially where the state will come in and they will pave portions of your, of our locally-owned, state-numbered routes. So for us, that's Route 140, Route 62. Route 12 is state-owned, state-numbered. Those other two are locally-owned, state-numbered. This work is completed completely by Mass DOT with their contractors and oversight paid for 100% by them. I'm told by our state reps that there's about $500,000 earmarked for Sterling in that, for sections of 140 and 62, including the one that I just put out to bid for us to pave. So, now we can take some of that paving money and focus on other areas. So, I thought that was pretty exciting. As you likely already knew, the DPW has executed a new three-year contract with Casella Waste to transition to an automated trash and single-stream recycling system. It's gonna begin in September of this year. Each household's gonna be receiving two totes. One smaller one for trash, one larger one for recycling. All trash and recycling must be put in these bins. There'll be no longer individual bags or containers picked up. The system's not only safer for drivers, but also more efficient. It'll reduce litter, no more open containers, paper flying around, trash bags being ripped open. And the hope is, is that it's gonna promote recycling and reduction of solid waste. So, the town can actually make money or reduce its charges to Casella by recycling more. So, we retain a portion or we get a deduction in our fees of a portion of our recycling. So, the more we recycle the correct stuff, the better we do. What we get back is based on what they call a contamination rate. So, if we're recycling incorrect products, our price goes up. So, we're gonna be doing a lot of public education. I think you'll see a letter, hopefully, the beginning, not next week. We're gonna bring it to the board next week for final approval of the following week. It's gonna have a lot of information, what's to come for residents, what can and can't go in the recycling bin. For example, plastic grocery bags can never be recycled. Some of them may have the little triangle on it, but it doesn't mean that it can go in your recycle bin. We get gig for, for those. So, like I said, a lot more information to come. And that's supposed to roll out sometime after Labor Day. They'll start delivering bins. So, trash day will stay the same. And the mailer that's gonna come out is gonna have a list of frequently asked questions on it with answers. So, I think that'll answer a lot of people's questions. But we're always happy to answer whatever we can. A quick update on some capital equipment items. So, the DPW just this week received its new six-wheel dump truck that was approved at the 2021 annual town meeting. Truck looks great. It's been put into service already. The equipment trailer and portable radios that were approved on the 2022 town meeting have already been purchased and are already in use by us. The new truck 18 has been ordered, and the reframe of our six-wheel dump truck has been put out for quotes. Additionally, the large pile of trees at the brush dump down at the landfill that dates back to the ice storm, was just this week ground up and disposed of. So, that's a nice thing to have. That project was split 50/50 with the municipal aid department. So, so that went well. Moving on to Water Department. They've been diligently working on keeping water flowing through this time of drought. We've seen very high water usage, which yields to a lot more maintenance at our stations between chemicals and, you know, high pump run times. We'd like to remind folks that there is no outside water permitting, watering permitting, permitted between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. And then, when you do outside water, And then when you do outside water, we ask that you follow an odd-even system, which means on the odd day of the month, you're on the odd side of the street, you can water, vice versa for even. The DPW is looking closely at both our own water supplies and the recommendations from the state drought task force. We are in what they call a severe drought right now, and we'll use that information to determine if a stricter restrictions warranted. As you know, we rely on our own sources. We don't have any interconnections or anything like that. So what we have in Australia is what we have. Beginning later this week, a contractor for the Water Department will be performing a leak-detection survey of the entire town water system. This'll probably take a couple of weeks. What this involves is using listening equipment on hydrants, valves, and the ground to listen for leaks on our piping network. So the operator rides around on a Segway-type piece of equipment, has eye-vises and a helmet on, drops his listening device down the road and on the various pieces of the water system to listen for leaks. Anything on the mains or from the main to the shut-off is the town's responsibility, and anything from the shut-off to the home is the homeowner's responsibility. So we'll be working with homeowners for anything that we find. But it's been at least a couple of years, I believe, since that's been done. So it's just good practice to do that, and we're gonna, we'll do it once a year going forward. As far as projects from the waterside, we have several projects ongoing to better our system and service. We currently have two water main projects in the design phase right now. One of them is all of Redstone Hill, so from Clinton Road all the way to Lancaster Line. And the other one is the Washaken Village neighborhood or the campgrounds. The town owns that water infrastructure in that private neighborhood. It was taken in the 1970s at a town meeting. So both these areas are in desperate need of replacement. They've been a real thorn in our sides as far as breaks go. Very difficult areas, and we're hoping to begin construction on both of those projects late in 2023, or 2022, sorry, and continue into the spring of 2023. We may be coming back for some harbor requests. We'll see. Coupled with borrowing, the borrowing article from the 2022 town meeting for water main replacement. So we're excited about those two projects. The new water source exploration on Crowley Road is moving along with the approval from all applicable state and local agencies to perform our five-day pumping test this fall. So what that involves is sinking an eight-inch test well at the site that we're looking at and pumping it at 300 gallons a minute for five days. And what they're looking at is not only the quality, but really for the quantity. So they're constantly checking the various small wells surrounding that big well to see how much water drawdown is impacted. Honestly, it's a good time to do this because of the drought. This is gonna be almost a worst-case scenario. But we're pretty confident that we have good water. It's just another step in the process to permit a new source, which, as you guys can see, is very cumbersome. So that is moving forward, and we expect to get that started end of August and do the pumping test into September. Water Department forces are working on implementing new measures to prevent lead and copper from leaching out of residents' plumbing into their water. As you know, we had a Mass DEP lead and copper rule violation at the end of 2021. We have gone through several testing rounds since then and been in the clear. When we had that violation, we had already been in the process of and completed what they call a corrosion control remediation study. So essentially, what can we do to prevent this? And with money that was approved at the last town meeting out of the Water Enterprise Fund, we are working on implementing those measures, and we hope to have them implemented by the end of the calendar year. And then there's at least a year of various testing that we're gonna have to do to ensure that it's working. And finally, the Water Department has been attempting to update their water meter infrastructure to get in line with the Light Department for the last couple of years now, but supply chain issues have prevented us from seeing any of the equipment that we need to do that. We've been contacting the vendors constantly and have no timeline on when they're coming. So once we have those in our possession, we're gonna begin a water meter rollout, or water meter endpoint rollout, and we'll definitely, much like the trash, we'll be coming back to brief you guys because everyone's gonna be impacted. Everyone is on the water system. That's what I have for an update.
John?
A lot of things going on there, Ryan. An awful lot going on, huh?
Been busy.
Have you guys had a little more off on that? Just to kind of keep on top of it, I guess, just a couple of questions. I think Route 62, so when does the state get started? They're gonna be doing the work from their end. Was it 62 and 140? Does that impact anything we're doing up on the intersect? No.
It does not. So 62 and 140 is the tip project, transportation improvement project. That project is being put on, you know, the town is pursuing that at this point. Once we get it through the process, then the state takes it over, which is probably a year and a half, two years from now. The paving for 140 and 62 are not necessarily close to that area. So 62 we're looking at is from Reed Road, which is probably 1,000 feet from that intersection, up to Beeman. And then 140 is from Crowley Road up to Dana Hill, so that road had already been paved through that area. So the 62-140 work that we're doing won't be impacted.
Just since we've talked about it a number of times over the last few years, it sounds promising, the Crowley Road water supply. So if that comes to fruition, does that minimize or eliminate our need to pursue anything up at the wiki-peaky, the reservoir that we share with, you know, ownership rights with Clinton?
I would think so. I mean, we have two good sources right now, but we have no redundancy. We have no backup plan, and the hope is to now have three good sources so we don't have to run our two so hard. We can kind of share the load. We're making way with what we have right now, so, I mean, that's my opinion.
Yeah, so if that comes to pass, it at least takes the heat off a little bit.
Right. It's also, we believe, better water, closer to our water system, and it's a more, you know, it's a pretty well-protected area, so.
Yeah, and the last question, it just came to mind from a few months, something came up a few months ago, but I don't know if it's just something I heard from Princeton, but our water content is certainly in good shape, I think, right now. I mean, you know, you hear the things about the PFAS chemical contaminant up in Princeton and quite a number of few communities. We don't have anything like that to worry about.
We had a PFA scare, I'll call it a scare, well before I got here, which shut down one of our three wells at Route 12. Now, since that happened, that well, all three of the wells over there have been sampled monthly, and they've been non-detected for well over a year. So we've seen no results similar to that initial rollout. PFA testing and sampling is very finicky. In the beginning, it was not very solid, I'll say. And we are already talking to DEP about a plan, and they're open to it, about how we can turn that well back on, run it what they call a waste, test it, and then we can start using it again, because I think that the result that was seen, which we've seen nothing similar in wells 20 feet away at similar levels. I think it might have been an errant test or something. So, you know, we, obviously, we won't be putting anything back into the system without ample testing, but we've, we test monthly for PFAs, and we've been in the clear.
That's good. Last comment, another question. I see the DOT is cutting the grass down at the median on Route 12.
Yeah.
That's nice.
There you are.
Hopefully, it'll be back when it gets another foot or two higher. Thank you. Great job. Great job all you guys are doing.
Thank you.
David?
Very nice people.
I know, he takes a while.
I forgot where I was going. Two questions. One, if this new well does come online, what kind of piping is involved? I'm assuming you have to pipe it to a tank.
Yeah, so we have water main on 140, and we have water main out, like, let's see. I don't know if we have it on John Devo. I know we have it on 140. So we can pipe it over there. There's, let's see, it's almost 1,500 feet, probably, of piping. It's not crazy, if you will. You know, it's a little bit of main, but it's also, there's not much, there's nothing in the road to dig around, really. So there is some piping, but nothing crazy. And it'll, it'll fill the tunnel tank or the Osgood tank. You know, Kendall's kind of far, but we only have one system, so we don't have multiple pressure zones. So everything kind of floats on the same, all the tanks float on the same level.
Paving on Pratt's Junction?
Yes.
Already know the answer, but the issue with water at Leggett, is there anything you need to do?
We will not be paving that road until those issues are remediated. And that, honestly, that goes for all the drainage issues is, you know, that one is a particular issue that we're aware of, whether it's 140, Meeting House, we have, there's gonna be a lot more burn work that happens in some of those areas. You know, we're not gonna be putting in giant drainage networks, but we can do better with the water, and we're aware of that, but we are aware of that issue. We will not be getting paved until that issue's taken care of.
Great. Thank you.
I really don't have anything, Ryan. I heard you the other day, and I hear you tonight, and I'm grateful that you're here and that you've taken the vote by the warrants and moving these things forward.
Excellent.
You know, I'm not even gonna ask you to go in to do your downtown renovation part. We'll save that for another day.
Okay.
Is there anything that we can do for you? I mean, you have a strong board as it is.
Yeah.
Did you say yes?
Oh, oh.
The answer was supposed to be no. Thank you, Marty.
No thanks. We're all set. I think we want to talk about parking a little bit, if that's something that we can.
We can, we can get into that.
Yeah, yeah. But, I mean, we just appreciate the support, and, you know, like I said, it's been great to work with my board. It's been great to work with you guys, and I just hope that we can all keep working together. Really, it's, you know, it's kind of the way it goes.
And it's really key.
It makes a huge difference.
Did you want to adjust the parking tonight, or is that something you guys are gonna talk about, and then we all put our heads together?
I was thinking that, well, I think we were gonna talk about it tonight.
Okay.
A little bit, if that's, if that's okay.
That's fine.
You know, really, I don't know, if you want to talk about it, or you want me to talk about it a little bit, or?
Well, maybe, maybe, maybe we first say why we're talking about parking.
So a couple of different parking situations. Most of them revolve around downtown. Obviously, the big concern is snow and ice, and snow and ice removal. Now, I, I did, ahead of this meeting, looked in the bylaws, and it's pretty clear that the superintendent of streets, which is myself, can move cars or tow cars and whatnot. And I, I do think we'll be more diligent about that this year. I do plan on sending out more code reds ahead of snow events, reminding people there is no on-street parking, you know, during the snowstorm or whatnot. I know in the town I came from, they, they call it a snow emergency parking ban. Kind of similar when there's an event coming, you know. But I think the, the bigger question was some of the overnight or long-term parking that we're seeing on Main Street. We've tried to do some maintenance activities, whether it's something simple like sweeping the streets, and it just seems to be very difficult to get some of these people to move. We've knocked and talked with the police and been assured they would move, and they don't move. So I think it was kind of, how do we remediate that? And I don't know if you have anything you want to add, or?
Yeah.
Steve Day, chairman of the DPW board. The issue, we, we went to the police department to see if we could put signs from bank to bank, well, from MS to the bank, for no overnight parking, okay? And in the wintertime, they're in the way for the pusher, and, you know, if we hit them, they're coming after us. So, but in the summertime, we're getting cable truck or the trailer parked out in the middle of the road, down in front of Apple Town, three or four cars in front of the block. You know, this is in the middle of the night, you know, doesn't matter if it's winter or summer. They're not, it's not a classified as public parking, overnight public parking. Their residents of the, of the dwellings, they should have their own parking. And to have a commercial vehicle with a trailer on the thing parked there every night, now it's parked behind the fire station. I just think that we need to put signs up from bank to bank saying no overnight parking, period.
Do you have an alternative for these people, Dean?
Really, that's not our problem.
Well, I understand that.
If they're paying rent to live in the big house across from Apple Town, then the landlord should provide them a place to park. I mean, I don't care if they park behind Los Angeles Credit Union, but then in the winter, they're in our way pushing snow or on the fire station. So we're just looking to be nice, to give them a heads up that maybe we're gonna do this, make no, a parking van downtown overnight. I mean, it's just, it's been a thorn of sweeping, line painting. You can't, people park on crosswalks, and you can't even paint the crosswalk. And you're nice. You leave, tell them, knock on their door, tell them. They don't come out. You ticket them. They got ticketed. Next day, they're parked there again.
But you're not sweeping and line painting at night.
It doesn't matter. Main Street we do.
Just because of the traffic, because of the car, the amount of cars that we see out there.
You know, it just, it doesn't matter what we do in the center of town in the middle of the night. If we gotta haul snow in the middle of the night, we gotta clean the sidewalks, we can't. You know?
I just think that we have to come up with some alternative. We can't just say, you're in the way. You just can't. And there, obviously, there's no place at these homes, or very few places at these homes where cars can park. I mean, I know people that live in those houses, and it's like a very narrow alley, and yes, up and back of the house, but that's for a little car. So I think that we need to come up with something else. I mean, there, if, if I said, well, we have public parking right here at the town hall, can they park there? And then what's the issue gonna be?
Oh, there's an old tennis club with lines out there. No one parks in.
I know, it's very sad, but we have a new sign.
It's blue. Well, we're the only town, we're the only town around in the center of town that you can park overnight. Other towns have signs that say, no overnight parking on Main Street.
Well, I don't have, I don't object to saying no overnight parking. It's just a matter of, you know, trying to, to give people an alternative. And we are not the only town. Trust me, go to Clinton.
Yeah, well.
Talk to those vendors on High Street. They will tell you, not only do they.
Yeah, but they're not there all night.
Some of them are there all night, and some of them are parked there all day long, and you can't get into the shops. So everybody has a parking problem. So we need to be.
We have a parking problem because we've all been nice and given them a heads up to move their vehicles, and they don't, they don't care.
And you say if you ticket them, they, they?
The next night, they're there.
Do they pay the ticket?
Who knows?
Let's find out.
Who knows? But having a commercial vehicle parked, I mean, it's tight as it is. I don't care if it's 5:00 o'clock at night or 10:00 o'clock at night.
I agree. I just think that we need to, parking downtown, and this is always, this is part of the discussion, has always been an issue. Yes, we did this bad parking lot. They put lights back there. They did the whole nine yards. And we've had several different signs now, but this blue sign is supposed to be the magic sign, and that people would park back there. How do we get them to do that? I suppose that's the question, you know, unless we do tow them, and we tow them back there so they can see that we have a parking lot for them.
Just, you know, it, it needs to be addressed, and if we let one, it's gonna multiply. I mean, who gives them permission to park behind, you know, the fire station on town property? I mean, he moves a truck from there to there, or he comes home late, he just parks right in front of the thing.
Maybe scared of the dark?
Not that. It's not my problem if you're scared of the dark. I don't want to be liable to hit townspeople if someone hits it. You know, especially our town equipment. If we hit it plowing.
It is a difficult situation, because like you said, if even, you know, Drew, you're getting to it. If we put them back here, then they're, again, they're in the way of snow removal again. You put a lot of them back at the library. They're in the way of snow removal, and then the library calls Monday morning and says, why did my parking lot get plowed? It was full of cars last night. So it's, it's, it's a tough situation, for sure. I think for the most part, you can expect the DPW in general will be more diligent about letting the, you know, during snow events, trying to get the cars out of the way.
Yeah.
Letting the cops know. You know, I've worked really closely with Sean, and one of the things that we had talked about was doing some more temporary signage ahead in maybe like a week's notice, which sometimes is tough for us. You know, I'd like to say we plan a week out, but sometimes we don't. Hey, no parking from this time to this time, we're coming in. And if you do, then there really is no excuse to not tow. But so as far as our work goes, I think at the very least, we'll probably start doing more of that kind of stuff. Just, it, it, the way I kind of look at it is no different than paving a road and someone complaining that it takes five extra minutes to get in and out. It's like, give me three hours, right, and I'll give you the next, you know, 15 years of beautifulness. It's, it, we need some time to work and some room to work, and it makes a difference. It, it looks good. I hate driving down Main Street and seeing where the sweeper went around the car three nights in a row because the car wouldn't move, you know. So I think we're gonna be more diligent about that, at the very least.
Yeah.
And should keep it, you know, encourage you guys to take a look at the parking. I know we all talk about parking all the time, and it is, it's a tough situation, but we'll do our best and keep it rolling.
Good to talk about it now in January, right?
Yeah, but it's not just January, like you're talking, the sweeping and stuff like that. Any suggestions, David?
I don't know. Could it be something we could entertain, you know, to get the ball rolling? No parking, overnight parking from December 1st to April 1st or something, you know?
That, that's a good one.
Parking behind town hall, I mean, just to get people accustomed to.
That's what Holden does. It's a winter overnight parking ban. There's a sign right there when you come into town every year. It says November 1st or whatever, or April 1st or something.
That's the same way, November 15th, April 1st, from 10:00 or 11:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. There is no parking on the street anywhere in town.
And, and we would just need, because really, the issue's Main Street. We have a couple of cars scattered around town that we can easily deal with. Usually, they come out when we sit behind them on the corner at 3:00 a.m. But, but.
God, I have a driveway.
If we sign the, you know, bejesus out of Main Street, people might get the idea. But in, in, in talking to the chief, he came to one of our meetings. He had some good ideas. He's like, you know, I get a list of the landlords, talk to some of the landlords, and, you know, we're not trying to be mean about it. We don't want to pull a rug out from under people. We want to do it nicely, again. Right, so talking to some of these landlords and communication, right? This is what's coming. Park back here. It's just like Boston, right? Boston, they're parking all over the streets, and they make them go to garages in the winter. You gotta figure it out. It's part of having an apartment and no parking, unfortunately.
Well, what can we do to start being proactive about this? Order and signs?
I think that, yeah, most of that's gonna fall on me. I can, I can, can take care of that. You know, and, and as far as the, like, if we were to start with the winter, I don't know how that stuff gets implemented.
Well, I, I mean, we could write as a board or as dual boards, look, this is what's coming to the landlords and to, to, you know, on both sides of the street.
Right.
And go from point A to point B. Why don't we, why don't we get together and do that?
Okay. Me and Bill can put something together, and even Sean, you know, can have his fingerprints on it too, so that he's aware, because really, it's his guys that help us enforce this.
Yeah.
And they've been, they've been very open to assist.
All right, well, let's just move forward with that. And, you know, are we gonna solve it 100%? I doubt it. But, you know, at least if people know too that you're not just targeting them. You know, and just because you don't like Joe Smith, you know, I'm sorry, Joe Bailey, let's go with Bailey. You know, and because some people might think, "Well, jeez, they're only picking on me," which is not necessarily a true story. We're picking on everybody, nicely, apparently, according to Dean.
Very nicely.
You're always so nice, Dean. Anyway, anything else for them, David? John?
I think it's a good idea, sometime in the fall, get the signs, and put it up for the winter, get started that way.
Yeah, that's about four weeks away. Sorry, but, yeah, so, we can do that, all together.
Yeah, I like that.
That's 'cause you like hanging around with him and Sean and Ryan, but Darren. But I think that people should know too, that there's Dean and Andrew and Blaine are all here from the DPW. I don't know how, you know, if all their good-looking faces are on screen or not. Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you, thanks for having us, appreciate it.
Anytime, almost.
I have any good updates, whatever.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do we currently get a rebate from Cacella, or are recycling?
We do, yep, and the hope is that that increases significantly. The rebates are very much with the markets, so, the more recycling, the better.
Second question, the money from the state for the paving?
Yep.
That's great news.
Yes.
Was that a surprise?
It was a surprise, so I have to thank Dick Mackey. Uh, he had tipped me off to that program, May, maybe? So I reached out to the folks with the program, and they said, "We've kind of, we made our list this year, we're all set. What you have in mind, we'll consider it in the future." And all of a sudden, I talked to Meg Kilcoin one day, and she said, "There's five hundred thousand dollars in here, I don't know what it's for, but it's for snirling." And then the next day, the letter showed up, so it was an absolute surprise, which is why I had put the product up to bid, and-
Nice, nice.
I'll take it.
Great.
Yeah.
You know, and the other thing is, is you go down to Lancaster, and they're paving 117, they're paving Route 110. And that's, Lancaster maintains that, but they didn't fund the paving. That's all I'm saying. We got roads just as bad shape as, and as our roots, they're state roads.
Have you recomputed what our new road score is gonna be?
Not yet, not yet, we gotta get them paved first.
One step at a time.
Even the crack ceiling will help improve, but I think if you look at the crack ceiling, you can see that a lot of these roads were even beyond crack ceiling, so, let's move on or paint it in crack ceiling, fortunately, but it's a start.
On your parking issue?
Yep.
It's an issue. You may think about advertising on the SMLD poster board and give everybody a pre-warning, like, you know, when drought alerts come up and all that kind of stuff.
Yep, that's a good point, that's a good point.
I mean, that's free.
Yeah, and people, I read it every time I drive by.
I slow down when something's news.
Yep, yep, I like that, thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anything else? Andrew, Blaine? Okay, thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, guys.
Pretty good update. Awful lot going on. Good Lord. Yeah. Should be thrilled.
All right, so, back to Barbara. So Barbara's here because we've been talking about the erosion at the town beach, and there's been a couple engineering studies done as to how we can mitigate that. And this is the erosion from Sweat Hill that goes down into, onto the beach and into the lake, and trying to fix it. So, actually, again, you know, not to embarrass Mr. Mackey, but again, it's something that Mr. Mackey and the Economic Development Committee has been looking at for a couple of years now. Um, there's been some progress made. You've got the engineering done for it, you know, at all. But I guess right now, where we're at is Barbara always wants money. So, and there's two different opinions about, you know, how to go about, how to go about it. So, Barbara, you wanna give us a quick?
Yes, I will. David, I haven't met you, and Barbara Loperty, Chairman of Conservation Commission, President of the Lake Association, and a two acts. This is Scott Nicklap, he's an engineer on the Conservation Commission, working for the Undercor of Engineers. And you, the town, paid for a study done by Whitton and Bigum, which would cost thirty thousand dollars to try to alleviate the erosion for the lake, as you all know. I have the plan here, if you'd like to see it, David, you are more than welcome, I'll open it up at your desk. Uh, there are two, we all thought at that time that we were gonna get a million dollars. And as we found out, that didn't happen. And the only thing we got, and thank you to Meg for Kilcoin, for getting the hundred thousand dollars that she did get. Now, the importance of this, in our minds, the Lake Association especially, because the land does not belong to the Conservation Commission, we cannot give any funds from the Conservation Commission to help with this. But the Lake Association is private. And because of that, we would like to make an offer to you of at least twenty thousand dollars towards some kind of bedment for the drainage there. That would be in cash coming to you. So-
Crack barrels only?
But the problem is, is that our engineer, one of our engineers, there's three of them on our board, estimate that the line that we're talking about would cost approximately thirty-five thousand dollars.
That's just the materials.
Just the materials. So, we need a little bit more money. Now, these letters have come out, as you all know, for the drainage, and asking for the funds, and so, this is why we assume that we would be getting some of the money. That we would be getting some of the money, because if you would read this, this does mention Sweat Hill continuously, and as well, it mentions drainage continuously. And there's also a section of that hundred thousand that you're gonna have to explain every dime nickel penny that was spent, and where it was spent. That's in writing as well, so-
Okay, can I just stop you from there?
Well, I'm just gonna, no.
Okay, we're gonna have to tell who and what?
Well, you've got the money, Mr. Callis there.
Okay.
You're gonna have to, that red, in red, explains that you're gonna have to explain where every dime nickel penny went. So, we were hoping that we were gonna get about twenty thousand dollars of that money. And it appears that we probably will not. So that is in itself very disappointing to us. So, we'd like to know if we can go to either the Finance Committee for additional money, or whether some of that hundred thousand dollars could be earmarked for us? So that's where we're standing, and if, like I said, David, if you'd like to see the plans. We already paid thirty thousand dollars for it.
Right.
I have it. Right, actually.
Right, well, I don't need to see the plans, but David wants to see them, it's fine.
And as well, there are two sections that we could earmark on. Either the one on Sweat Hill, where the two, the larger basin is located, or the one on Hall Ave, where the smaller basin is located. If we went with the one on Hall Ave, where the smaller basin is located, then that would be a very cheap fix, more or less. The riprap that's on the designer plan would be not necessary, and the ATA mats would be very easily slid down on the side there without any problems. And the retention basin on the Hall Ave, of course, would help a lot with the runoff as well. But the key thing, according to our engineers, are the basins in the front. And so, I have also talked to Ryan, who says he doesn't have the equipment to do any in-kind work with that. So I understand that, equipment is the most important thing to get in there and do that job very fast. With what he's got, he said it would take him a whole summer. So, we can't even look at that, we understand that. I had hoped for some in-kind work. But anyways, what I'm hoping for now is that I either can go to the Finance Committee, with your blessing, for money? I can get some of the money that you guys are controlling?
They do not control it, Barbara.
I don't know who's got it, but I was told that the Economic Development-
It goes to the town. It goes to the town. EDC cannot spend a dime of that money without permission from the town administrator or the board. So they haven't spent that, I don't know where you're getting that information.
Well, Dick told me that you're already over budget.
No, I never said we were over budget.
Well, that's in our minutes.
When I said, "We'll be lucky to get it completed with that money."
With that budget, the whole thing.
We spent about twenty-something thousand for the engineering so far, and sixty-something hundred for the ADA.
How much for the mats?
Six thousand and change.
I didn't know what it was, I had no idea.
Yep, roughly twenty-four thousand dollars for the engineering work. And the ADA work is probably going to be in the neighborhood of fifteen or more thousand, fifteen to twenty thousand. That's the renovation of the bathrooms, the pavement, the rollout mat, things of that nature.
Okay, and that's not even counting any of the trees that have to come down? All right. Okay, so, just to be clear, the EDC did not spend that money without, you know, permission from the town?
That's okay, I just tell you, add those two things up, and it's over a hundred thousand dollars.
It's eighty thousand dollars.
Huh?
It's like eighty thousand so far.
It's only a hundred thousand.
Well, and it's only eighty thousand.
And you have no idea how many trees have to come down, down there?
Okay, well, see, those are things that we can talk about, like, who do we get to take down the trees? And can that be some in-kind work? Or can that be done by a local contractor and done safely and reliably? I mean, there are things you can do, but let's get back to, Scott, you think the whole thing is gonna cost what?
No, we discussed it at the board the other night, at the detention ponds, and Dick was there. Um, myself and Steve Pavlich sit on the board, Steve works for Tetra Tech, I guess.
Okay, so how much?
We looked at the material costs, thinking that the DPW could do the in-kind excavation for the detention, which they can't do now. But we said, just the material costs for the piping, and for the, you know, the catch basins and all that stuff, would be about thirty-something thousand dollars for the one basin over by the swamp, which tends to be the problem area anyway, because that's where all the silt and all that stuff comes from.
Okay, so thirty thousand for one, so you're looking at probably close, four materials, so you're looking at possibly sixty thousand to do-
No, the other one's much smaller, the other one's about half the size on Hall Ave.
Okay, so you're looking at about-
You're probably looking at another-
Fifteen?
Fifteen, yeah, it's not as many pipes and catch basins.
That's forty-five.
One, Maureen, what?
I understand that, but here's the thing.
The total project cost is, you're probably looking at, for everything that Dick discussed, and we've been discussing, and Dick met with us, and we've had great conversations, so the collaboration is occurring. But, the total project cost, you're probably looking at five hundred thousand for everything, and everything wants to get done.
Right, but the first thing, and we've said this from the beginning, the first thing that needs to be done is the drainage. Not just one, but both, this is why you had the study done, is so that we knew, get that stuff draining down, out of there totally, that's gonna be the first, because it makes no sense to go and spend a hundred thousand dollars or two hundred thousand dollars doing renovations at the beach if that drainage isn't done. Because you have to fix the parking lot, the parking lot is not in good shape, and it's not gonna get in good shape unless you fix that. So, Mr. King is gonna write you a check for five hundred thousand dollars. We're gonna get it to Dick, okay, the rest of the money. So you're looking at forty-five thousand dollars for materials. Now, and I did reach out to see about some contractors that can do that type of work, and how much that would cost. And I'm perfectly willing to look at people as far as getting trees.
Now, I understand, Steve and I didn't have RS means, and we didn't do a full-fledged cost estimate. We were just looking at the plans going, "Well, this is how much roughly an attachment basin costs, this is how much a twelve-inch diameter pipe costs, concrete or HDP." So, we were just going off of what I've seen on bids and what he's seen on bids.
So, what I've done, because, you know, Barbara had put this out, and Richard had talked to me, and Bill, is I did reach out to Whitman and Bigum, and he is reaching out to several different contractors to-
So they are gonna do a process estimate?
Yes.
A full-flinched process?
Yes. And keep it amongst yourselves, it might be at no cost, so, you know, don't tell anybody, I'm sorry. But, but, but you know, they've been willing to work with us right along. But he, I mean, obviously, they don't do the work, but they do know contractors that do do the work. So, let's see what they come back with as far as cost. Now, how to pay for it, because Mr. King flinched at the five hundred thousand dollars, so, we still have some money in there. But also, we can look into the possibility of using some of the ARPA funds, in that the ARPA funds are designated for infrastructure, recreation, health, and all of that business. And all of that can be rolled into that, if you use the right words.
Yeah, including some of the ADA stuff that Matt was gonna work with Dick on, that they can put some of the other costs someplace else. I understand that, but the big thing, we felt, was coming to you with such a large donation from the Lake Association, to give you the incentive to really try to work with us. That's a very large donation.
And you know, Conservation's always been worried about that whole drainage down in that area anyway, because it's, it's now become a swamp and old wetlands.
Honestly, it's a nightmare, and it has been for quite a while.
Um, it's totally salted here.
Longer than that, Scott. John, do you have any questions, answers, you got five hundred thousand dollars?
Well, that fixes it, and we're all set, right, so?
What, do you even want to?
No, but I mean, that's the element, right, where's it gonna come from?
Well, I think we have to do what we've done in the past as a town. You have to use your imagination, you have to reach out, you have to start writing for grants, like the ADA stuff, yes. I mean, you know, and reach out to some of these things. Look at what Ryan got, because Mr. Mackey suggested something, he got five hundred thousand dollars for paving. It's not, it's not something that can't be done. I think that, you know, I know it's been a lot of patience, but I really believe, I personally believe, the drainage has to be the first step. You got the engineering, you got the ADA thing going, but does no good to spend a lot of money down there.
You don't wanna beautify something, willing to have it wash up.
Right.
It's usually the way it would go.
Dean, it's the way it's gone since I've been in town.
Exactly.
Bake sale, I don't know.
Bake sale. Hey, get right on that, Apple Pass, okay?
But you said, like, the Lake Association is willing to kick in twenty thousand dollars. Let's see where we go, and see what we have as far as money, and where we can get the money.
Yeah, because the Lake Association does put up for some of the, you know, they did a lot of the alum study and assisted with that.
And we did, this year with Euro.
It's pointless to keep doing something only to have the erosion and the sediment keep overloading the lake with what we're doing. It's a catch-22 on fighting.
We also spent ten thousand dollars this year on the Euro pillows. They are the newest technology out there to catch phosphates before they enter the water. They're on all the tributaries, and we haven't got any results back yet, but the Lake Association paid that as well. So, you know, plus, we pay half of everything that happens on the lake for treatments, et cetera. We try to be very generous to keep that jewel for the entire next generation and the generation after that. They're all old down there, so.
Young, you fret, there's some young people just waiting for you to go.
I know that.
Got the deposit all set. How many trees have to come down?
A lot.
What's a lot?
We've got-
Well, the kinds are eighty-five feet high, okay? The average pine, eighty-five feet high, is gonna cost, with a lot of bono work, probably five to six hundred dollars a piece.
How many?
There's gonna be at least three that have to come down, at least.
That's a lot.
The other trees are very compromised, Maureen. However, somebody decided to take care of these trees was wrong. They went down by the trunk, didn't they, Dick? And chopped off part of the tree down there, which made it rot out. It is hardly a decent tree down there.
Matt and Ryan are going to look at some of the trees tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning, they're going down, Ryan's going with Matt.
You know, Conservation's not doing this alone, we're working with the DPW and stuff, so.
We're trying to, we're with everybody. And like I said, with such a large donation from the Lake Association, we thought that we could maybe at least go to the Finance Committee and ask for some capital money.
You can't do that now.
Well, it doesn't have to be done right now.
No, you can do it in March.
Yeah.
But it just seems pointless to spend money on something to reconstruct a bridge or a riprap and stuff like that, if you don't have the sediment removed. Or at least catch the sediment so we can remove it with the DPW's, you know? Because we maintain catch bases in this town, ain't number one, right?
No, there's nothing else, Maureen, I just wanted basically to let you know that that's where the Lake Association stands. And the Commission would have been happy to contribute money as well, except that we cannot, because we do not own the land. That's town land.
It's hard for us to do.
I think I would like to-
I think I would like to investigate that a little bit. You are a town board.
But we have our-
Our fees and stuff from Conservation, it comes from the wetland protection, and there's certain criteria that has to be met on-
All right, well, you're protecting a wetland down there. I do have a question on, you know, how much should we have, how much should we get coming in from the tree removal? I know that we're supposed to get money for that. Do you have any idea, Vicki? No?
Yeah, I can give you an answer to that.
Yeah. Okay, I don't have anything else. I think we just have to, you have to keep communicating with the people you're communicating. I'll keep in touch, I'll see, you know, what we can find out from Whitman and Bigum, and-
That's all.
That'll be good, Sean.
Well, you know, things came up, Barbara, and I wasn't able to really connect.
And somebody will find you, you know? You know, I will.
Lord have mercy. All right. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you then. David, did you want to see this plan a little bit?
No, I didn't. Thank you. I signed it into you. They know more than you.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, okay, thank you, Barbara, thanks, Scott. Good to see you, Scott. Haven't seen you in eons.
I still think we should get a meeting, but that's a different question.
Well, that's another, something else for another day.
Yes, it is.
All right, in the longer hours. All right, so, next we have the election workers. Kathy Farrell has sent us a list of the election workers. I cruise the West, I appreciate the people even raised their hand and decided to do this. I haven't got a problem with anyone on this list. Sure they've all been vetted by Kathy or the town clerk's office. So this is the election workers for the 2023 elections, which are going to be here before you know it.
Yeah, I'm good with them.
I would entertain a motion to approve of the election workers en masse.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any further discussion?
I don't know.
Somebody raising your eyebrows there, David? Somebody on there you think?
Oh, I just, I'd like to thank these people for stepping up and doing this.
Exactly. Okay, all those in favor?
Kilcoyne, aye.
Smith, aye.
Grants, aye. All right, and then we're going to move on to sign the warrant for the upcoming election. And this is the state primary. So, again, this is from the town clerk's office. It's pretty straightforward. I would entertain a motion to design the warrant for the 2022 state primary.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Kilcoyne, aye.
Smith, aye.
Grants, aye. And just so people know, the elections will be held over at the Bootell Road, the Houghton School. We'll get more information as we get closer. And then we need some police constables for the elections. We don't use police, do we? We use just the constables. Yes.
This basically, there's a motion on the memorandum that was sent by the clerk for, so that you can get everything in there that's necessary, but it does say that it can be either the constables or the police.
Okay.
It's pretty flexible.
So the motion is to move to approve a sufficient number of constables and/or police officers, but not less than one, at the polling location at every election area, to preserve order and to protect the election officers and supervisors from any interference with their duties and to aid in enforcing the laws relating to elections, as required by Section 72 of MGL Chapter 54, which was changed in Section 13 of Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2022. I hope everybody's written this down. Furthermore, move to designate the police chief the authority to assign specific police officers according to scheduling and availability. The town clerk will advise the police chief on the location time the officer or constable is needed. That was a motion, believe it or not.
It's, uh, seconded.
Seconded the motion.
All those in favor?
Kilcoyne, aye.
Smith, aye.
Grants, aye. Oh, a lot of words.
A lot of words. This is short word.
I can read. All right, so now, we have the town adminis-, yes, Connor?
Did you vote?
Yes. Lost you there with that little paragraph and a half, didn't we? Okay, and now we have an update from the town administrator and-
So I'll summarize a few of them. There's a few that haven't changed since our last meeting, but we do have a couple applicants for the planner position, so we'll be interviewing them soon. I believe in your packet, there was a couple-page thing from MRPC. It's a grant that is now available through the, our bipartisan infrastructure bill. So this would create a joint application for an action study, or I can't remember what the title of it is, but that'll open up some funds to actually do an implementation, so some road or sidewalk funds down the, down the road, but this would be the beginning step to get through actual plan, kind of similar to like what we had for the complete streets. We did get an update on the playground, looking perhaps mid-September ship date, so hopefully get it in this fall. The school flooring, hopefully that that, well, the order has been placed, hopefully get everything shipped so that perhaps they can get that done this summer, at least a portion of it, if not, we'll stagger it throughout to get that done. Working with contractors to get prices on the work at Peg's Pond for the walking trail and ADA compliant stuff there. I don't think there's anything else to talk about the town beach for right now. I think we have covered all the bases at this point. And we have ordered some of the 1835 furniture for the hall upstairs, and more will be on its way. And nothing major new on the downtown revitalization, other than we have ordered the light poles and fixtures for the work that'll be done down there.
So the 1835 septic has run into somewhat of a snag, I understand?
A little bit, yeah. With some of the easements.
Okay. So do we have a Plan B? I mean, I understood that in the past we had two different, three different options if we didn't get the-
Yeah, we've got a larger loop. If we're going to be doing the main street stuff, we may go out that direction, but that's further down the road, or we continue working on the easements to get that through. Obviously, the last one is the easiest and most direct, so.
Right.
The other ones are going to increase the cost significantly, and the timeline gets pushed out further.
What, what happened with the, because I thought all the easements, they were agreed upon. Was it because it wasn't in writing and it was just a handshake-type thing, or?
I'm not sure what's happened in the past.
Okay, are you working on that? Are you going to do that?
No, Carl's been working on that, and I have been checking in with him recently on the easements, or at least for that last one. The other three are all set to go.
Could you do that? Yeah. I'll talk to you about it later. The Y's, yeah. Okay, anything you need from us? Bill?
Right now, I think we're good.
Okay. Just a couple of PSAs. Fair Committee is always still looking for volunteers for the fair that's coming up sooner rather than later. Also, I want everybody to know, because I was told, that we have plenty of COVID tests around town. If you need a COVID test, they have them at the library, they have them at the senior center for the general public. Don't have to be a reader or a senior to get one, just stop in and see if that's here Veronica. And they also have some here at the town hall. And when I say they have some, they have an overload of COVID tests, so no need for anybody to go and buy one if they suspect they have more than a cold. Also, the senior center has their car show on August 11th over at the senior center. It's always a fun time. Free hot dogs, John, I love it. Other than that, we're not having another meeting until August 31st, unless something important comes up that can't wait. Three weeks. Well, John's on vacation. That's right, John, I said it again, you're on vacation.
Appreciate it.
David, anything for you?
No, I just would like to thank Bill on slowing his tempo down on his reports.
Isn't that special? John, anything?
Stirling Market's doing great, and Farmers Market seems to be doing well too every week. All good? Right?
The Stirling Street Market's doing fabulous.
Yeah, she has one I go by every Saturday, so unbelievable.
That's right, yeah, they get a good crowd. Anything from you, Mr. King?
I missed the meeting, so I don't know whether there was any follow-up on July 12th with the Designing Board of Appeals request from Northgate, and whether that was resolved or not.
Still not.
Still not resolved?
No.
Because you're clicking up on your 30 days and your minutes that was recorded on that.
Yeah.
I was serving a CBA decision, and they have not made their decision.
Have they, have they heard the case? Have they heard the case?
Yes, and their attorney-
They meet again next week.
Yeah, and their attorney is on it. Haron, Harriet?
Something like that.
Yeah, their attorney is on it.
So our loan is still outstanding then?
Yeah, kind of. They did come in, if that's part of your, they did come in and pay the $51,000 for the building permit, but they are still objecting to the rise in prices, which, you know, I don't want to pay more for gas, or food, or housing, or taxes, or anything, you know, but it happens.
I mean, it's a multimillion-dollar project, right?
Yeah, it's also a 40B.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anything else?
Yeah, still advertising, as usual. We have two openings on Finance Committee, and we have three openings on the Capital Budget Committee.
Okay. Cool.
Can't let that pass.
Oh, anybody that's interested in volunteering for anything, finance, capital, see how your tax, or where your tax dollars are going. And then Economic Development is also looking, as well as the Recreation Commission, so it's pretty much not a board or committee not looking for somebody. So, Richard, anything for you?
No, I think I'm good, thank you.
Really? Okay. You two look like Sherbert sitting over there.
Hanging ten.
Come on. Vicki? All set? Okay, I will entertain a motion for us to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Kilcoyne, aye.
Grants, aye.
Stay cool, everybody.